So I want to also, Mel, can you hear me? So I want to take a minute too. There are school board members with us tonight. And they're here because they're anxious to hear from our families around this project. And specifically, the topic tonight are on grade configuration. So up front, Saint Jeanne Cannon. And behind me, Gina, is Pam Walsh. And Danielle Smith is over there. And Brent Hastings. Jim Richards will be joining us. He's on his way over from Claremont. And our newly elected school board member, Bob Cartman, is with us tonight. So thank you, Bob, for being here. We've already got him at meetings before he's even been sworn in again. So I appreciate you being here. I wanted to kind of set the stage for tonight in saying to you that over the next three nights, we'll talk about grade configuration. You want to listen to our families, hear what they have to say about the various models that the board has been considering. And the two models were the current model, six through eight. And the other model that has been brought up is the five through eight model for our middle school. Tonight, we'll show you a very, we have a very brief PowerPoint that all that principal that part will do. And we don't want to take a lot of time on that, but we want to be able to hear from you, answer any questions that we can, to, again, to hear what you're thinking about this concept. In addition tonight, the principal of Devo Meadows back there, Michelle Vance. Thanks, Michelle, for being with us. Her physical education teacher's back there too. Thanks for being with us. And Matt Cashman, our director for facilities. So we appreciate you guys all attending tonight. And with us is our architect. They've been working with us, helping us plan, working, talking us through all kinds of different concepts, ideas. We actually visited a middle high school down in Sawas Mass. And we had intent to visit some other schools, six through eight, five through eight schools, so that people can see what they look like and how they function. And so Laura's with us and her assistant, Bob, right? So appreciate you being with us tonight. So without any further ado, Pauline, you want to try to walk us through your PowerPoint? And we'll take some questions and content and some concerns and go from there.
I'd be interested. Thank you. Yes. Welcome, everybody. So I think one of the important things for people to know is what happens at the middle school anyway. You know, everybody says, oh, Runlet, sixth, seventh, eighth grades. Sometimes it's like, whoa, those middle schoolers, right? Well, we at the middle school love those middle schoolers, even though we know they're going through these crazy, this crazy time developmentally. So we're hoping to give you a little overview of what's going on at Runlet and any middle school that has a strong program. So as you can see up there, we have currently grades six, seven, and eight. Each of those grade levels is divided into three clusters of four teachers. So that's all with the intent of making a large school smaller or feel smaller. So each student is in a cluster, maybe six one, six two, six three, seven one, seven two, seven three, eight one, eight two, eight three. And within that cluster, they have their four core content teachers. So they have a language arts teacher, they have a math teacher, a science teacher, and a social studies teacher. So those are the teachers that they go to throughout the day. They revolve around those teachers. So again, it's a big school, or bigger school, but this is a way that we make it feel small. The only time that they're not in that cluster is when they go to their exploratory class. And those are listed up there: art, PE, health, tech ed, and music. Also embedded in that is band, chorus, and orchestra. So they're with their little, what did you call it? Neighborhood, I think. Neighborhood, which I love that neighborhood. Their little neighborhood for most of the day. Then they step out into exploratory, for their exploratory classes. And in addition to that, you can see up there, we have chorus, band, and orchestra. When I first came to Runlet, I was really impressed by that, that kids had the opportunity to be in orchestra, through the strings, band, chorus. Also, world language. In seventh grade, they get, through their exploratory rotation, they get two weeks in German, and then two weeks in Spanish, and then in French, and then Latin. So they're exposed to those four world languages. And then at the end of seventh grade, they can choose which one they want to take when they're in eighth grade. And that's a program that we would like to expand down to the sixth grade if we possibly can. The other important part too, this has just happened within the last couple of years, is each student starts their day going to advisory. Now advisory is a smaller group of kids with one adult, sort of like another layer of their school counselor, or the step before their school counselor. Every day, they start their day, they go over their day. And we recently became fully chain and responsive classrooms, so we're using a lot of those strategies. Again, it's a way for kids to develop a strong connection with one more adult in the school. So we're pretty proud of that, and we'll certainly be continuing that. There we go. These are all the pictures that we've taken through to you. You can tell that they're all pretty recent because the kids all have masks on. Also, we have a pretty strong athletic program for fall, winter, and spring sports. So again, we're trying to paint a picture for all of you of exactly what goes on at Runlet. Again, people don't always have a good idea of that. We also have a variety of extracurricular activities for kiddos. We have 21C before and after school program. We also have student council, which is strong and getting stronger. We love getting that student voice in hearing from our kids. We also have a game club, we also have an environmental club, we also have a National Junior Honor Society art club, and there are more to a newspaper club. And we also have a performance ensemble. Forgot to put that in the slide. That's PEG, we call it PEG for short. They put out two plays per year. Very strong performance groups, very, very strong. The plays are unbelievable. You would never realize or think that they are middle schoolers doing that. So we have a lot of offerings. We also are growing our multi-tiered systems of support. And that is providing, at the universal level, for all students what we think they need. So that is core instruction, that is advisory, that is supports from school counselors. Then if they're struggling a little bit, then tier two, additional supports. And then tier three, which would be even more specific and targeted supports for kids. So all of this is woven into the fabric of Runlet Middle School. So as we've been researching about this building project and looking for data, looking for research, looking for what is it you want from this next, this new building, which is such a great opportunity? And I can go back to kind of the handbook for middle school, which is this, we believe, through ALE, which is the Association for Middle Level Education. And these are four of the essential attributes and characteristics of effective middle school programs, that they are developmentally responsive. And when we think developmentally, we know that students, the teenagers of ten and to fifteen, are going through rapid changes, physically, socially, cognitively. And so it's really important that our middle school program be developmentally responsive, which means our teachers understand adolescents. Everybody in the building understands adolescents, that when a student gets into trouble or has a problem, that we're responding in a way that is supportive and appropriate for where they are developmentally. And when you ask a middle schooler, why did you do that? And they say, I don't know why I did that. Usually, they don't know. It's part of, they're a little bit impulsive, and they're learning, and coming together with their friends. It's just a very interesting time in their lives. It's also important that they are challenged, that we are challenging them, finding that, not to get into edgy speak, but that zone of proximal development, that sweet spot for learning, that we're challenging them at just the right, just the right challenges. And that we are empowering them. And a few minutes ago, when I was talking about student council, I had several meetings this year with student council members, and they come and they're bringing ideas about things that they want to do to make our school a better place. And that student voice is so important. We do multiple surveys throughout the year to find out how kids are feeling about a variety of topics. And that we want to empower them to make the school theirs, which is kind of hard when they're only with us for three years, but we do our best. And that everything is equitable. Remember, fair is equal, fair is giving kids what they need, and we want everything to be equitable for all kids. All right. So do you want to talk about this next part, Laura?
Sure, sure.
Yeah?
Do you want to start?
I can do a little segue, sure. So again, as we've been going through all of this discussion, the discussion with our school board has been very rich and very, very, I'm trying to think of the word. They have been asking really, really good questions and really making us think and go back and say, okay, let's find some research for this. Discussion has been very rich. So we're looking at what is best for our middle schoolers, what's best for the city of Concord, what's best for our school district, but always keeping the needs of our middle schoolers at the forefront. So are we looking at six through eight? Are we looking at five through eight? What's best? Again, for kids, what's best for our district? And so again, the discussion has been really good. We had one board member, she made a full spreadsheet of questions that she has been asked, which I keep going back to and looking at that. And so this is such an exciting time, and we want to make sure we get it right. We want to make sure that we're doing what's best for our kids. So when we look at six through eight or five through eight, I know sometimes people are like, oh my goodness, five through eight? Why would we do that? Six through eight? Well, we already have that, so we kind of know that. But we want to explore all the options, and then we want to hear from the community. We want to hear what you think our kids need. So working with our architects, I love these conceptual designs that you're going to see because, well, I'm a visual person, I'm not sure if any of you are visual people, but when I see these designs, helps me think in my head about the potential of what could be. And so Laura, we've been working a lot with Laura and her team, and I'm just going to let her explain, because she's been listening a lot to our teachers and to our different groups within the building, and trying to take all of that information and put it into these conceptual drawings. I'm not sure how they pulled this off, but they really have. So I'll turn it over to you, Laura.
Thanks, Pauline. I just want to emphasize to begin with that these are very preliminary. We're trying to show what would a five through eight school look like, what would a six through eight school look like. And this is really two smart questions, and to start, so people can start to see what relationships might be, what would happen, where will the students be. So this is all about providing you with a little bit of background, so that you can better understand what the implications are for a five through eight versus a six through eight. So up on the screen is a diagram for a five through eight. And what has come through very clearly in any of our discussions is if it were to be a five through eight school, what we're really, what we're hearing is that it really should be two schools, that the fifth and sixth graders are very similar in many ways, that they have very, there's a great commonality in their maturity and how they're learning. So to have a school that's a five through six and a school that's a seven through eight, but you have some shared facilities. You have a gym, you don't want to have two separate gyms. You don't want to have necessarily two of every specialized space, but the classroom spaces and many of the, some of the, many of the specialized spaces would still be in either the five through six school or the seventh and eighth school. In that way, a student going in the fifth grade does not feel like they're going into a large school. They're going into their part of the school. And most of their day will be in their school, in their area of the building. So what this diagram is showing up here is on your left, you have a fifth grade academic wing and a sixth grade academic wing. But they would share art, they'd have their own administration, they'd have a cafeteria. So the fifth and sixth grade cafeteria would be separate from the seventh and eighth grade cafeteria. There'd be one kitchen serving both, but the kids would be with their grade level or with the adjacent grade level. Then the same thing would happen with the seventh, eighth grade school. The seventh and eighth graders would each have their own academic area. The seventh and eighth graders would have one cafeteria and many of the shared support spaces. But the larger spaces, the gym, the auditorium, would be, the mechanical area would be singular. The kitchen would be singular. Each school would have its own entrance. So when you're dropped off or being picked up in the afternoon, you would enter through either the fifth, sixth grade school entrance or the seventh, eighth grade school entrance. If you were fifth, sixth grade, you'd have your own playground. It's really appropriate for how fifth and sixth graders want to engage outdoors. The seventh and eighth graders would have their own recess area, which would be different, and have different types of seating areas and equipment. So it really would be two separate schools connected by these large shared spaces. I'm just going to shift over to it, just to give you the contrast with the, all right, so this is within, so within this school, this is what we would call a neighborhood. And Pauline had spoken about, in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classrooms, the kids, each group of kids has four teachers. That would be the same for the fifth graders. They would be in a transition year where they would have two teachers. So each day, most of the day, would be focused on one of two classrooms. You'd either be with the English social studies teacher in one classroom, or you'd shift to the math science teacher in another classroom. So, and this, I understand, and I think this has already happened at the Christian McCollough School. So the fifth graders wouldn't be in the same kind of academic situation as the sixth graders in terms of the numbers of changes that they're going through the day. So they would still, they'd have their own project area, they'd have their own guidance area, they would have, so this would be the fifth grade neighborhood. And then there'd be direct connection to the, as we said before, the art, the English language room, and the cafeteria that are shared with the sixth grade. So, I guess. So a sixth grade neighborhood would be just very similar, except in the sixth grade, you now have four teachers. You'd be shifting, during the day, you'd be shifting to those four different teachers during each day. But you would share ELL, art, cafeteria, with the fifth grader. So this would be your school. Okay, how does that change? So if you went, so that's if you had a five through eight school. Now let's look at the other alternative, the six through eight school. So in this case, we're thinking that each, the sixth grade would still all be together. And this is very much like the way it happens at the Runlet now. Sixth grade is primarily, their classrooms primarily are together, seventh grade classrooms primarily are together, and eighth grade classrooms are primarily together. They would all share, they would actually each have your own entrance. That's what happens at the Runlet now, so it would be sixth grade entrance, seventh grade entrance, eighth grade entrance. However, just for the size of this room, we'd still suggest having two cafeterias. This is, you know, to make smaller places. I think we can all remember, if you went to a larger elementary school, how noisy and loud, moistness a cafeteria can be. Maybe it might be better to have two cafeterias, even with a sixth, seventh, eighth grade level. But in this case, all of these spaces are shared by sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So it is one school with three academic wings in that central space. And in this case, each of those wings would be about the same. They'd all have the four teacher neighborhoods, and then they would all have a shared common areas together. And I think, do we have one more? No, that's it. So it's back to you.
Back to me. So to continue the conversation, six through eight, five through eight, what's best? We were looking at, okay, what are the opportunities and what are the challenges if we were to look at a five through eight? So research shows, this is true, that students enter adolescence at an earlier age now. Due to better nutrition and all of that, kids are entering puberty earlier. Exposure to more academic, extracurricular, and athletic opportunities. And we spoke a little bit about that earlier with our exploratory classes and our music program, our performance groups, athletics, extracurricular. So fifth graders would have the opportunity to experience those sooner. I want to be clear that in middle school, we never want to be pushing kids along or making them grow up more quickly. Kids grow up quickly enough. At each grade level, even if it's a sixth, seventh, eighth, which is what we have now, we look at them as sixth graders and what are their needs? Seventh graders, what are their needs? Eighth graders, what are their needs? Not, oh, let's move them along more quickly. That's never the intention. Fifth graders are more like sixth graders academically and developmentally. And even if you look at the New Hampshire state standards, which I did not make a slide of, maybe I shouldn't have put that in, you can see how they're grouped third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth for the standards that are taught. Four years at one school helps with transitions and helping a school develop an identity. No longer a layover between elementary and high school. That's what I had said in a previous facilities meeting. Sometimes it's the middle school as seen as, oh, they're just there for three years, you know, sixth grade, they're transitioning in, eighth grade, they're transitioning out. Get them through. Four years at one school really helps kids develop a sense of belonging. And families too. For some kids, it's a fresh start. I hear early, some kids are ready to move out of elementary school, they need that fresh start. Now, challenges, leaving your neighborhood school is hard for families. Families are very attached to their neighborhood schools, and with good reason. I remember when my kids were in elementary school, we loved their elementary school. You know, we had, my kid, all three of my kids were in a multi-age one, two. That same teacher had all three of my kids, we felt like she was an extended family member. I mean, you get really attached to your neighborhood schools. Five through eight will create a large school. No getting around that. It'll be a big school. Some worry about exposure to older kids, to eighth graders, fifth graders and eighth graders. It's a worry. And possible loss of leadership opportunities for fifth graders. So I know in some elementary schools, there's a student council, and the fifth graders are the leaders there. So some people worry about that. The challenges are all a little more subjective. We couldn't really find a lot of research that backed five through eight or six through eight, to be honest with you, and boy, have we looked. So this is where we're at right now, and I think we're at the point where we would love to hear from all of you and try to answer your questions.
So before we open it up, we'd like to hear from you. There's a couple of other things. I think I alluded to the fact that this discussion around Runlet, the middle school project has been going on for a while. Betty tells me it's gone on as long as back in 2009. So there's been a lot of interest in doing something for the middle school and the building. In addition, I think many of you know that we are all faced with issues around preschool. That's not kindergarten, but preschool. And as you know, the federal government has been pushing hard for universal pre-K, and for a lot of reasons. One, we recognize the lack of appropriate settings for early learners, us three and four-year-olds. And we also know that because of the lack of any kind of learning environment for kids, many of our families, moms or dads have not been able to return to the workforce. We also know that one thing in research will tell you that your best thing for the block is preschool education. And that's been very clear, that when youngsters are exposed to, I'm not talking about doing addition, subtraction, and reading when you're three or four-year-old, that the opportunities around working together, play, all the things that our preschool teachers do with youngsters, glue, cutting, scissors, and all those good things that little kids do. And so that is on the plate. Knowing that, we asked Laura and her team to look at the elementary schools, what would happen? Could we incorporate or accommodate our preschool program? So we looked at every single one of our elementary buildings, and we knew that given the average numbers of students that come into our each grade level, we knew that we would need to, we would not be able to house them in our elementary schools if the district decided to provide preschool education. I want to know, I also want to make sure that we have a lot of partners in the community too, that we work with every day. Those are our early learning schools that provide support for three and four-year-olds. So we would work with them also. I don't want to, I want to be able to look at that as we get closer to it, and if preschool becomes a reality. So that was the other piece of this discussion about our elementary schools would not be able to have preschool because we don't have the space, quite frankly. Right now, all of our teacher mentorship, I mean, I'm Yoda Chin, we quickly learned that all of our classroom spaces are occupied. And in some places, the work classroom spaces are occupied now because we may have been into classroom spaces. So why? We have a lot of new programs, new programs for English language learners, we have programs for reading and math support, and all of those kinds of programs for kids. So we've really filled up our schools in concrete for programs for our students. With that said, I also want to welcome Jim. Jim came over from Claremont. Do you want to, Jim's, Jim Richards is our chair of our school board, and he's a little late. I told him to be careful, he's flying over from Claremont, so he may, you did great.
I didn't, I didn't get stopped. No, I just wanted to thank you three for coming out. There's a significant number of school board members here, and they're here for a reason and want to hear from the community. We have not, I'm going to tell you right now, we have not made up our mind yet, no decisions are set. As a matter of fact, I would think I can speak for most of us, and that we really wouldn't get additional information to help us make this decision. So thank you for coming out. This is my district, this is, you know, the school that my kids went to. So I'm happy everyone took the time to come.
So thoughts, comments, questions? Oh, go ahead, jump in. So we might not be over here. Would you mind, you know, using this?
Yes, I know, I know.
You know why? I know, but if we see this being recorded, I hope you all realize that this meeting's being recorded.
Is that one remote?
Yeah, I think so, I think so. Yeah, I think so. Think so.
That microphone, that came. That microphone came.
Oh, turn that off a little. Okay.
So just ask? Okay. So I guess I'll just throw them all out there. So I guess my first question would be about like transportation and having 6th graders on the bus with 8th graders. It's pretty much unsupervised for the most part, except for the bus driver. So that would be a concern of mine. My other question would be like after-school programs. Would all the kids be together or would they be in their designated buildings? For the extracurricular activities, would 5th graders be included in that or would it be separated by grade? Would they have the same opportunities pretty much? And then, I guess it would be a good idea, at least it would be interesting idea, to see what kids in 4th or 5th grade, how emotionally they felt to the possibility of going into a middle school. It would be interesting to see their perspective because they might be physically grown but, or growing at the older ages, but they might not be emotionally there. So I was curious as to what maybe a child's thought perspective would be. And that's it.
Awesome. Thank you. Those are awesome. Did we all get those questions? So transportation is interesting because I, you know, I wasn't sure either. There are a lot of school bishops that have KAs, you know, so that was. In my first principalship, it was a KA and all the kids came together on the bus. But I wanted to ask that question for Concord. What happens? I find out that we have kids, elementary kids on the bus with high school kids. So that's not uncommon here. You're already doing, the kids are on the bus with high school kids. And you know, honestly, the high school kids get on the bus and put the headphones on and you know, they're not going to be bothered by the other kids. But that does happen already in Concord. The question about co-curricular is a really good one. And when I was a middle school principal, we brought 6th grade in for the first time. Parents, or trust me, parents did not want their 6th graders. They wanted to keep them in the elementary school. So we created teams, but we created A-teens and B-teens. You know, we had like a varsity, MJD. So that they got to enjoy those team efforts and the team sports, whether it was soccer or basketball or whatever. So we created opportunities for those youngsters. And in other ways, the clubs and the programs. Again, same thing, because you can only handle so many. You know, an advisor can't, wouldn't be able to handle all of the kids. So they're often broken out into different topics and by grade level. We haven't gotten to the weeds of that yet, but it's certainly a question that we will address as we go down the road. But the goal was to try to provide different things for the age groups. Because you're right, 5th graders are different than 8th graders. And so we want to be able to provide for both of them. Talking to the 5th graders, 5th graders, I think is a great idea. And so we'll work with our principals to do some of that and hear from our kids. They are our best, you know, they give us the best advice, don't they? Did I get anything on that?
Say something about the after-school? Like if they stay for after-school hours or?
Yeah, I think Paulette mentioned that we will have, you know, the 21st century will continue to run in the middle school as it does right now. So the youngsters that are at the school and whether they're doing activities and enrichment activities or, you know, doing the homework or getting extra help. So all of those things happen. And it may be somewhat mixed in the afternoon because they're trying to meet the needs of all the kids. I don't know if we would have a separate program, but we haven't explored that yet. To be fair, I wanted to be working with Sue Fowley and our director for 21st Century and talk to Sue about how she sees that program. Great question. Betty, got to go to the microphone. Can I take your mic?
You can take my mic. Thank you. It's very nice to be able to hold a hearing, but I'm not sure who's supposed to be hearing what. I'm listening to a sales pitch for a grade 5 through 8 school. And parents, if you don't want that, you've got to speak up. You've got to speak up. Now, nationwide, 75% of the middle schools are 6 through 8. 25 are not. I don't know the circumstances, but I know the numbers. Now, in New Hampshire, 50% of the schools are 6 through 8 and only 21% are 5 through 8. There are 10% of others and 9% of others. So what is it indeed that makes these people choose to have a 6 to 8 school when you're being asked to have a 5 to 8 school? I've been trying for weeks. Oh, wait a minute. Maybe I should tell you why this old lady with a cane is here tonight. I have spent 14 years in a classroom, either 5, grade 5, or grade 6. I have spent 15 years on the school board. I have spent eight years as the trustee of the university system. I do know a little bit about education. All, 26 years of teaching at all. 7 through 9, five years. Let's see, it was 10 through 12 when I taught high school for seven years. 26 years of teaching from all grades from 3 through 12. The only reason I didn't teach 1 and 2 is because they're the most important and they didn't want me. So anyway, I do know a little bit about education and I have tried very, very hard to find out where this 5 through 8 myth appeared. And finally, just this morning, just this morning, I found out there's a copycat in here. Some of the school board members, if you can't blame them for not knowing, they just arrived on the scene. And even Barbara Higgins and Jim are people who are the most experienced school board. I bet you're going to learn a lesson right now and just a minute. Back in 2009, 2010, they were going through the consolidation of the elementary schools. So that there were fewer schools and there were bigger schools. Mainly that was because of the idea that all of the elementary schools needed to be brought up to call for disabilities and so forth. And it would have cost $22 million to do it. And they spent less than $60 million for three brand-new schools. At the time, they had the discussion, or should they build it large enough so that full-day kindergarten would have space when they arrived? Well, nobody knew when full-day kindergarten would arrive. And you couldn't ask for building aid if you were going to have empty space or not. No, that wouldn't be fair. And speaking of that, 40% of the school costs for the consolidation were picked up by state building aid. We cannot go afoul of state building aid. We absolutely need it or this community will be crushed or crashed with taxes. Okay, this school that we are talking about now looks like it's going to be $80 million. And so now if we put another 1/3 or, well, you do the math, we're over $100 million. Oh yes, and we're going to have to pay the principal. And oh yes, we'll probably have to have two assistant principals. And oh yes, we're going to have, what was it? Health and also, well, mechanic, no, it's not mechanical arts, but it showed up there. There were going to be two more offerings to kids in 5th grade if they were there. Well, where are you going to get the teachers? I don't know. Is it going to come without a cost? Oh heavens, no. Nothing comes without a cost. So if you have grade 5, go to 5 through 8 complex, it's going to cost you more, me more, you more, you more, you more, anyone. Now, the thing of it is, when I looked at that thing and I just hope, I got off track here. We need to go back to 29 and 2010 because they had to figure out, are we going to make space for kindergarten? And the idea was, no, we can't. We don't know when it's coming. We don't know how many there will be. We can't get building aid for it. And so they did nothing because they thought, we'll deal with it when it comes. Well, Laurie being, full-day kindergarten came a little quicker. But guess what? They're managing it. They're managing it. We didn't have to build new space to do full-day kindergarten. Did you see any other buildings torn up? All those new schools were back in 2012. And when full-day kindergarten arrived, did you see any more schools? I didn't see any. You know what? How could I miss that? And so it's a similar problem right now. So let's face it, folks. What they said at the time was that, well, we've got a default position, a fallback position. The fallback position is that if we have to build a new middle school, and it was on the horizon, it's been there for 20 years, that if we have to build a new middle school, then we can make it bigger and we can put 5th grade in. Oh boy, look at what that is saying. We have a space problem. We're going to fill it with the 5th graders. We're not sure whether 5th grade should be with 6 through 8 or whether 5th grade should spend one more year with the elementary. Well, I'll tell you why I've embellished a little jingle. And it's let them stay, don't cast them away. Let them stay. Do not cast them away. And when you cast, what happens? Throw it out like that and you don't know whether you're going to catch a fish or not. And when you throw the kids out like that, you don't know whether they're going to succeed or not. And I take great exception to the opportunities and the challenges that they put up. Virtually every one of those opportunities is arguable and they didn't have nearly enough of the challenges. Let me tell you about what happens in elementary school. When you're in 5th grade, you're the big cheese. And you should be. You've been working for a long time. And you probably are as close to alike with the 4th grader when you just got through as you are with the 6th grader where some people want to send you. But the nice part about that is, is homie, it's comfortable, it's empowering. Don't you just love that word? We don't know what it means for 5th graders, 10-year-old kids, but we're all willing to say it. And the thing of it is, if there's a problem in 5th grade, your teacher then has the opportunity to go to the 4th grade teacher and say, what should I know? What should I know? What should I know about Johnny? How can I help him? Or how can I help Suzie? You have all that. You don't have that junior high. It's very, it's very enormous. The kids will have four teachers. So little kids have questions like this. Oh no, now I have to ride on a bus. I can't just go off to school. Oh no, now I won't see my friends. Because we'll be scattered all over these places. Oh no, the teachers, the other teachers won't know me. I'll know four teachers, but will they know me by the time the teacher and parent-teacher meetings come up? I've seen classes where a teacher didn't even know for sure which kid, what class, and a parent-teacher conference. Now, is that not sad or is that not sad? So folks, if you have a reluctance to have your 5th grader go to a 5 to 8 school, especially where they have all this interruption from the pandemic, for heaven's sakes, speak up and ask for more research. If more research will help, we won't. I've taken much too much time. But people need to know that the truth is, this is all about space, not about kids. Don't thank you.
You want to say, no thank you?
No, don't thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Betty. I don't know how I followed that, but I'm going to try. And frankly, a lot of the things you just said were things that were percolating in my mind already. I have the advantage of having a stepson who's been through Runlet and actually graduated college. So 15 years apart to my twins, veteran 3rd grade here at Beaver Meadow. I also did special education law for a little while and represented many juveniles who attended Runlet at the beginning of my legal career. When he went off to middle school, the 6th graders circulated through two teachers. Now they're four. So my first question is, when did that change? If somebody can answer that.
That changed this year. We have a reduction as well.
Yep. So we struggled with him, even with just two, even as a 6th grader. Now we're talking about four teachers for 6th graders and two teachers for 5th graders. He managed to duck the entire 7th grade year. Nobody even knew he wasn't going to the cafeteria because that was an intimidating space. He was hiding in the library, not doing anything academic, but also not where he was supposed to be and nobody knew it for almost a whole year. So the middle school is a big experience. And our kids need time to develop the skills that go with that. I'm not hearing that in 5th grade that's going to happen just because they're now at the middle school. Myself, too many years ago, attended a 7th through 12, regional high, middle school, high school, four towns. It was very much like the diagrams we just saw. The 7th and 8th were in their own building. The shared services were in the middle. The high school was separate. Three buildings. We still, as 7th and 8th graders, had to walk through the hallways of that high school to get to art, to get to home app, to get to typing class. It's very intimidating for a 7th grader who's still growing. Yes, we have some taller ones, but the majority are pretty small. Now we're talking about 6th and 5th potentially having to do that. So I can't, and I do think this is about space. You're absolutely correct. Superintendent Murphy just said that. We're now looking, oh, pre-K's coming, pre-K's coming. We've got to think about pre-K. Where are we putting these kids? The fact that we just built three new buildings less than a decade ago and we're out of space, I don't, that's going to happen again. And mark my words, it will happen again. Because we're not planning for growth. We have declining enrollment, yet we're out of space. So just saying we're going to move them into a new building doesn't solve the underlying problems that I see here. That we're not focused on the kids and what they need at those ages. Especially since we're still in a pandemic. We're not out of this. The losses they've had, I met with my kids' teachers today, regression. And I felt that we had an excellent year last year. I'm in the minority. I know I am there. I talked to their friends' parents. Their friends' parents are not saying that they had good experiences last year. Everybody did the best they could, but we did not give our kids everything they could have because we couldn't. We just couldn't. And so despite having what I thought was a very successful remote education year, both of my kids are suffering regression in education this year. And so they need it more than ever in these coming years. And I recognize that my 3rd graders are highly unlikely to be even impacted by this. But the kids behind them will be. And I care about all the kids in Concord, not just mine. So those are just some of my rambling thoughts that I think need to be said.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else want?
Appreciate the comments and...
They want to take everything?
Sure.
So before we even start this discussion, I think I personally have had concerns about the size of Runlet as a 6, 7, 8 school, but it's already a very large middle school. You know, I think I'm probably in a minority in this group, but do you think the city could benefit from having two middle schools? I think, you know, I think those kids are at a point in their life where they could benefit from being in a smaller community still instead of being in a bigger one. And this is asking to throw another, you know, how many hundred more students in where they become a number at a very young age. And that really does concern me.
I, it has been a concern of mine. I want to be very honest. I think 900 students at middle school level is too much. I do. I absolutely agree with you. I was a principal of a middle school that had 1,200 students. And I just built two middle schools. I built another school, so we had two middle schools of 600 each. And so I moved to build the schools, 600. Another principal had the other school. So I do worry about that because I think our focus is on kids. You know, that, you know, it seems like this is about space in a building and money and all that good stuff. But it really is about providing and creating an environment where your kids are successful, where people know them so that they don't slip through the cracks. They're not in a lull room, having their lunch instead of being where, you know, where they should be. Some kids don't even have cafeteria by there. That's not usual because it's too much. But 900 is a lot and, you know, it's a diverse community. Our community is diverse. Our community is diverse. You know, you have, you have a lot of new families. We have a lot of situations in Concord that may not be like some other communities. So we have to be prepared to meet the needs of a lot of students. So I am worried about 900. You are right, Katie, and I, I think the board is going to have to deal with that. Building two middle schools or keeping one and building a new one, I think that, that is a discussion that they will have. And we're talking about, there was always consultants, right? And when you have two systems like that, you've got two complete services that obviously increase the cost tremendously. So that, that's, that's, you know, again, please remember this project, even if we, you know, we are going to go to the state and, you know, we will go after the money and we do, and Betty's right, there are, I just finished a middle school project in the community that I came from. There are all kinds of criteria that we have to go through. And, and we have indicated an intent, but we wouldn't even be there until 2025. So we have time to plan, to do this right, and then to do whatever the community needs to do or do not. I mean, I suppose that's an option. I think we're ready to, I think you're ready to do something, but that's going to happen with meetings because those options need to be up here. Anybody else, any other thoughts? Anything that we should think about?
Would you say that you're going to be sending something before final decisions were made so you can get a call from the parents?
Oh, sure. What we want to do next is we have another session tomorrow night at Abbott Downey, and then we have a virtual session next Tuesday night, so the folks that, you know, couldn't make it, take it out. And then we'll do a survey, kind of a survey of our families for people who just didn't, weren't able to access. Because we do want, I mean, the board was very, very clear that that's what they, they wanted to hear from, from our families, and that's why we're doing this. So, and they're pretty open and transparent about the decisions they made. You know, they, they've discussed this in instruction committee, they've discussed this in the facilities committee, they have committees that address these issues. So they've, they've been, they've been working at it for the last eight months, nine months.
Just one other thing that I forgot is that staffing, right? We already have in our elementary schools staff that supports our classroom teachers that go between the grade levels. If we're shifting kids out into the middle school, that's an in fact staffing, our in fact staffing issue in the city, without being able to get an assignment.
Everybody has this staffing issue right now. You're right, you're absolutely right with stuff that came down, it's really maybe difficult for hiring and for, you know, filling all of our positions. Of course, we will be looking at that and looking at the numbers in the building and, you know, how many speech and language can we become, the support services, special education teachers, all of that will be looked at. But you're right, I mean, there's going to be a need for staff. There's no question about it. We talked actually today, what do you need, a principal and then an assistant principal at each grade level? Or do you need two principals? I mean, that has, that discussion hasn't started yet because we felt this discussion was, was one of the three, top three that we needed to begin to deliver it on, working from this point on.
Kevin, you mentioned, you know, this, this plan and that plan, or possibly doing nothing. I'm wondering if you could, sorry to have to put that on the spot a little bit, they explained why we can't do nothing. Why, I mean, why can't we just, why, why, why do we, why can't we do nothing?
Runlet's a mess. Because Runlet's a mess.
It's old. Why can't we, why can't we, why do we have to do?
So it's not that we can't, it's not that we can't do anything, Gina. We've got roofs on there. We have 11 different roof systems.
I get it. I've asked you this before. I don't know the people who haven't been necessarily pushing it in on television, but...
Okay, so 186,000 square feet. That school has old windows, original from 1957. It's got old HBC systems. The flooring, some areas of the flooring, some areas of the building have hazardous materials. So if we want to replace flooring, we've got to burn that up. We have to date it. We have to put the flooring down. And I think over the years, when we talk to other members of the board, you know, obviously that worked before you guys, we, we kept looking at, when are we going to look at this middle school project? Betty, you and I were, you know, 14 years ago, when we, when we did the three elementarys, we were always asked, hey, that's great that you're doing the elementarys. When are you going to do Runlet? So we've got a lot of costs that we would have to sink in, but additionally to that is a program. And I think that from the, you know, Principal Fitzgerald, she could talk, we've got 700 square foot classrooms and we've got 1,200 square foot classrooms. We have science in some areas of the building. Those hallways are extremely long. I'd feel better hearing more from an educational standpoint, but from a physical plan and structure, that school is in rough shape. So again, it's not that we can't do anything, but then we'd have to make a decision to put some big money into that and look at the classroom spacing and look and see how we would have to increase, what we would have to do to take that consistent footprint and make it more usable for the program.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all glad that Runlet is done. Why change what isn't work? And the building itself needs to be done, but why we model the whole grade system? We've never, it's never been brought up. Parents have never been like, gee, oh, you should have a career to go there. And fifth graders have never been like, oh, I can't wait to go to middle school. Everyone just wants to nap in that classroom like that, or grow a pile, but you know, common, common building, modern day, I was looking to change the actual building of the system in that.
When you said working with the system, do you mean by that?
Sixth grade.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I'm saying that in grade in comparison.
If you're in sixth grade, yeah. Or middle school, yeah. It's quite the opposite. It's actually, you know, her parents, her, herself, my little one was in Florida with. When they're there, sixth grade, I can't even imagine setting her, her...
I do think that one of the things that Matt mentioned is program, and that's really important to us because that's about what we love in kids. And the programs that we're able to, the class size, the actual square footage of classes are small and distance, when we talk about teen, but the science is in another part of the building. We have old science labs, and they're in a very difficult shape, tough shape, and all need to be redone. So I think those are the issues of our programming and making sure that we have optimum programming around health and other, other subject areas like our family, consumer science, the robotics, the STEM labs, which are all much more current kinds of programs that we have for youngsters at middle school level. So those are things we want to...
One, one question that I had at Mass and School Board meeting or otherwise, is about two questions. What's allowed us not into integrating three and four-year-olds into elementary schools? And secondly, what kind of retrocity is going to happen to Beaver Meadow for a three-year-old, you know, be able to have a bathroom, to imagine a toilet?
Well, let you know, we already have preschool programs in our, in our schools. We have preschool here at Beaver Meadow. We also have a preschool program over at Knobrook. So we have pretty robust programs. So you're right, we do have to think about bathroom facilities, bubblers, you know, drinking water, just even serving wine, you know, there are places that they would go to make sure that they accommodate everybody else. So there would be, there would be a need to make accommodations if we added a preschool program to Abbott Downey, if we added one to Crystal McCollum, if we added one to, well, that would be the floor, because broken ground is a 3D. Right now it's a 3D5. So there would have to be accommodations made, I think, to service Abbott and Crystal. And maybe talk a little bit about that with our architect. And you can, Laura actually did some of that for us.
So we did look at what would happen at the schools if the three, three-year-olds and four-year-olds came in. And while, you know, you can accommodate all the three and four-year-olds, with some pretty minor modifications in some of the toilet rooms, you can, and changing, right now there's schools that have very, have small breakout rooms that might become a toilet room that was successful for all the kids. The schools with Christopher Hall and Abbott Downey already have kindergarten kids, kindergarten classrooms, they're appropriate for pre-K as well. So there would be some internal renovations that would be, have to be made, but primarily around bathrooms and the relative lineup. It's more the numbers and making sure you have appropriate room for the, for the, for the numbers, having a better understanding of how many students would come in and how many times a day, how many times a week they'd be there. So those are the challenges. I don't see it as being a significant dollar amount. Other than the Runlet, is the accessibility of the Runlet because codes have changed since the times that the Runlet was built. So door widths are too narrow, corners are too narrow. So those things are, that can't be modified. Security issues, yeah.
I, I haven't been around as long as Betty. She is far more experienced than I do, but I was around when the visioning process in 2017 occurred and the community had input. And a lot of the questions are outstanding and great questions. The, the reason is exactly as Betty said, it's just space, right? We're looking at that, and the question that comes up there, it's like, well, it has five to eight, right? Does Huffington have that? I don't know. There are other schools around that have five to eight. And if we're looking at, at pre-K, that's one of the things we consider because, you know, space and money are the same, it's two, two middle schools, you know, that's been brought up before and all, and it's, it's a case of cost, right? Significant additional cost on the taxpayers of the Concord community. So people were considering this because the alternative would be we'd have to build pre-K in either, you know, five locations or two or three or whatever, separate individual standalone locations. And, and that cost had some people concerned. So that's why the board had, has considered a lot of different options. And quite frankly, that's, that's why they're here to be discussed. And so we're looking just there for everybody's input with regards to that because it's your tax dollars that we will be using and quite into the future. So it's a very important topic that we want to hear from, from everyone on as far as size of school, future building, current building, it all ties together. So I really appreciate the fact that you've been willing to share your concerns and your opinions with us because it's, it's the tough decision we're at right now.
I guess my last comment is if you encourage people to come up more, and do this again over at Abbott Downey, and next week we'll do a virtual, and I will resend that link out because some probably got lost in one of the mills I've sent out over the last couple weeks. So we'll make sure that people have that, so they can, can share their thoughts and we'll survey and we'll see them.
The only thing, the only other thing I'll say is that for those people who couldn't be here tonight, as well as all of you that are here, we're still gathering information. Feel free to talk to your school board member or any school board member. Feel free to email us, do our emails, and all of our contact information is on the website. And we really do want to hear from you in however, whatever form or however it's most convenient for you. So once again, thank you for that.
Good news, no link to the virtual on the website?
I'll have to check. I hope it is, but I don't know that, it's still there right now. The link to it, I'll have to check.
I just want to...
Yeah, I'll make sure that is on tomorrow, if it's not. Thank you all. Thank you very much. The most powerful people, he's up there, awesome.